All right, welcome to the May 5th Board of Selectmen's meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off, putting up a public hearing, final public hearing for the town meeting warrant. You want to read down through it, Joe, or did you want to?
Just you, the articles, you talked about the differences in the budget year to year.
Anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to discuss?
I just got a quick question on Article B5.
Yep.
Was it okay to address that now?
Sure.
In light of, you know, recent stuff. With the proposal article stating that all fiscal year overdraft should be closed to fund balance, does the board have a definition for overdraft? Additionally, what dollar amount does the board believe is reasonably close to fund balance without requiring further public discussion or vote? So that taxpayers can clearly understand, you know, the limits or the incentive of the article.
Does that policy have a limit to that?
I don't think there's an overdraft policy as to chair, but this is a longstanding question in Rancho. It's been worked this way.
Yeah, but given recent events, I think that some folks would like to know if there's kind of a definition of what this board perceives as an overdraft.
So an overdraft, the way I understand this is any amount that's over what was approved for an expenditure from the previous community. So it could be a dollar, it could be a hundred dollars.
So is it, is it the opinion of management and the board that there shouldn't be a dollar amount defined so that folks know that there's some consideration when we're talking about overdrafts?
I don't think there's ever been a dollar.
Yeah, this court, the range is pretty good about not having overdrafts. And this, as folks know, recently we've had one that was predicted to be significant in the board of column meeting and so forth, and brought it to the public's attention. Is there a specific threshold there? No, that was a, you know, kind of a unique situation that found themselves.
Do you have something?
I'm sorry, I'm not, please, I mean, I get the in later recent events, but that, that was voted on in special town meeting and this has always been worded this way when you were chair and everything else. Trying to figure out exactly what, what it is.
I think I expressed was that in light of these recent events, that it may be thoughtful of this board and management to look at that article and perhaps consider that there should be some language so that, so that constituency can clearly understand.
You mean like, you mean here going forward, like every year, not just this one?
No, no, just going forward.
Yep. I don't know. What, I don't know what you would, what would you do to like, what, what would you, would, if you were to word a question out, I'm curious.
No, so in other municipalities, this question is not usually left open and there's a percentage that's.
You say up to, or a percent or up to 10,000 or whatever?
A dollar amount more than.
Two percent over budget or whatever, some, some factor that you.
Yeah.
Was that a good experience in Butfield or any other place? Let's say it's wrong, I'm just curious. Yeah, I, I haven't seen this article, seen it in some places and other places you don't see it. Sometimes you do see a specific amount or a specific item. I think this might have worked well. I think it's worked well for Rancho. The, the challenge that you can have, you know, now we're in May, we've got two months left of the year. There are some accounts that I know, some departments I know that are going to be closer than others. Obviously PD is, is over now. You can't really tell until the end of the year, like you can make an entry and guess. You don't really even know until sometimes after the town meeting whether you're going to come in five or 10 or a hundred or a thousand dollars over. That's really the intent of this.
No, no, I, yeah, I certainly understand the intent, Joe, and I'm not, it's just a consideration that I thought perhaps should be a thoughtful process going forward because we shouldn't be going over budget. I mean, there's, there's the key factor is we shouldn't be going over an approved budget. And while I understand the premise of this particular article, I was just thinking it would be something perhaps should be thought through for future processes.
Probably something we could discuss next year.
Yeah, as long as, as long as, as long as, to Joe's point, as long as it can be put together so we don't shoot ourselves in the foot, even though we're not in the common practice of going budget. One other, for the sake of conversation, one other area that we're probably going to go over is the transfer station. But we've been wide open about the fact we had rodents there and had to take some unplanned actions to, to handle that. In the event that town meeting failed, didn't pass this article, you do have the contingency to use the same pool of money to accomplish that. With you saying that, it makes me think of, in my own line of work, so let's say that 300 feet of sewer main just went bad and all of a sudden you have to dig it up and it becomes a really expensive problem that nobody planned for. So you would need, need to be able to close that out, am I correct? In an emergency, yeah, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
One article, B13.
B13, B13?
Yes. If I wrote, if I wrote down right now, no, I'm so sorry about you. So the grant, that too has been one that's been consistently written the same way, so there's no, there's really no discussion about them. I had a question. Does the board have funding in place to meet any match, matching fund requirements that may come in with some of these grants? I mean, how do you generally cover that? I know this article's been longstanding, but there's also been concerns by other, you know, it's, it's one of those blanket ones. So how do you handle funding for grants throughout the fiscal year and matching funds that are almost always an assessed fee article?
Almost anything set, we don't have anything set up.
Well, there, there are some projects that we are working on. One that comes to mind is the seating byways. There's spending grants that started happening in previous years, something like that, where we knew ahead of time approximately what it was going to cost and we had that earmark. Typically, there's either an earmark or there's a small enough amount that you can cover it in the budget, you know, what's in there. You try, we endeavor to plan ahead and recognize that we're going to apply for this downtown. There's a revenue component to it, an expenditure component to it, and try to fill that in. Sometimes the opportunity comes up that we've got enough in the operating account. It's something you're going to buy anyway, so you can offset it that way. Typically, we try to plan ahead, I guess is the answer to your question, try to work that, whatever you're going to apply. Oftentimes with a safety grant, it's something you were going to buy anyway, like call to invest or something like that. Let's do it, right, because you're going to buy this stuff anyways, or you can prove all to. I guess the short answer, but.
Mark?
So, uh, what I've heard is that depending on what the grants are and what department is they in, if they have a reserve account, I think the board sort of intends to take it out of their reserves for the matching thing for, if the grant is for that department. But I don't know that that, I don't think that's a policy, but that's a common thing. Like I think the, which was, I thought was a little different with this seeming byway thing down there on Tico Street. They took that out of the matching grant, out of the highway reserve, which, you know, I, I didn't quite see how it was highway, but need to get it somewhere, I guess, think that was probably as close as. Down, but unless downtown, full ban or whatever, I don't know, but that's not, not anybody. I never thought about it, well, it might be a good idea to have some type of funds available matched to have available for the cost share of the grants.
I've seen matching fund, grant, reserve accounts. Which is the only reason the question came up, because they didn't know how we accounted.
We have, this is here, we have used the downtown revitalization, we've used the economic development reserve account. Now they have been put together, we've used those historically for that. Also, the highway reserve question that was just brought up, we were getting a handle on the balance in that account, which I can disclose for downtown revitalization, why they classified that grant as highway, which I think is a pretty, pretty straight, straight faced explanation. Not typical, certainly fits the classification. But we have used reserves, the naming in my time during downtown revitalization and exiled reserves separately, and then now they're, they're together. That's another avenue to kind of be a catalyst, and that was something, back when RREOC was more active, that they promoted, let's have this available for these projects when they come up, so that we don't miss an opportunity because of the funding.
That might not be a bad idea to put a line in.
Yeah.
If you know far enough and enhance it, well, you can populate it, yeah.
I got a question now. If we created a, a grant fund, basically is what you're saying, since we have to reduce the undesated fund balance, can we create it out of that because we're so far over in that, in that account? You, the board could not do that without town meeting. Right, but is it possible? It may be, there's going to be some semantics there with what, what constitutes a capital reserve. That's a discussion. Yep, no. Theoretically, that could work if the board were inclined to do that. One of the other elements of the conversation recently has become, you know, what's tip eligible? As manager, I mean, it's nice to have that pot of funds, but getting to it is, is much more restrictive than what we're talking about now with reserves. It's been the philosophy of the budget committee, in my perception of it, to steer projects like this more towards tip as opposed to having, you know, the more alacar access to those reserve accounts.
You, you need to do a, a line in each budget where you can't transfer funds from budget to budget, correct? You couldn't.
Yeah, we can.
You can't have a general grant.
Can't have a general.
You'd have to, that'd be a police grant fund, a fire.
Yeah.
Or line, I should say.
Or maybe we should find that out. Yeah, we can, we can research that, certainly, but there, there's no time to do that for this.
No, 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 no.
Which I think everybody knows, just wanted to clarify to post this.
It was just a suggestion because I had seen it in other folks' town meeting warrants where they establish a matching grant fund reserve for this, for the purpose of, say, something you didn't plan for comes up and it's a fantastic opportunity and there's a $200,000 matching fund pocket of money that's going to keep you from applying for that grant and you get a million dollars. I mean, you really, it was just more thoughtful process for the future, so you weren't shooting yourself in the foot to deny.
Good ideas, thank you. Anybody have anything else? What happened here? My, sure, all right. I guess we'll close the public meeting for the town warrant then, Joe, move on. Steve's not coming until six, you said.
Yeah.
Go ahead and see, we just want to jump down then and bounce back up and whoever pops in.
See if that's Maine Health.
Sorry.
Into the room. Good evening, is there anyone from Maine Health in the room? Franklin Memorial.
Hey, Joe.
Yeah.
I had told them 5:30, so they might scroll in sometime later.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just jump down, we'll go through some minutes of stuff, whoever comes in, just keep an eye on that. For public to speak on a non agenda item, anybody, Mark?
I just had one question on your executive session that says legal.
Yep.
And I was just wondering if you were going to discuss my letter of correspondence that didn't get in mind for the packet about the last election.
I'm not sure of what, I didn't, I didn't get a letter.
I guess that's a question for Joe.
So we did at the end of, actually it was beyond the period where we were receiving correspondence last time, a letter from Mark, from his attorney, apparently. I have shared that with the town's attorney. Whether or not it'll be a discussion for tonight's executive session, I don't know. But that letter will be on the next agenda.
Right. So you don't know if it's on the top of our list or not?
I do not know if our attorney has had time to process it, he got it this morning. So the executive session was for items previous to the receipt of that letter.
Okay.
So it may be discussed.
Cut, well, the reason I asked, I was thinking about that and I missed the deadline, that's okay. So that'll be in the next packet, but to me, it's an opinion thing that may not qualify for executive session unless the board of selectmen have reviewed it and then vote to just get legal counsel on it or something like that. That would be different to take it into executive session without them seeing it, I'm not sure, I think it would have sort of been in the packet if it was going to come up in the executive session. We'll see.
Anybody else, a non agenda item? All right, we've got some minutes from Airport Commission Planning Board, we also have our minutes from the April 22nd meeting. Motion by Sam, I'm tied for a second. Give it to Ethan, all in favor? So moved, all right, now the consent items. Liquor license, classic provisions, Red Plantal Hash LLC.
Make a motion to approve liquor license for classic provisions.
We hear from Sam and a second by Jake. All in favor? So moved. Event permit for duck race.
Make a motion to approve the event permit for annual duck race held on July 3rd.
Second motion by Sam and a second by Jake, any discussion? All in favor?
Motion to approve the event permit for Stars and Stripes 5K Run on July 4th.
Motion by Sam, second by Jake. Any discussion? All in favor? All moved, welcome back, Mr. Savage.
Make a motion to approve the event permit for the annual benefit concert held on July 27th.
Motion by Sam and a second by Jake, any discussion? All in favor? So moved. Vendor license.
Make a motion to amend the, amend the vendor's license for fresh eats to be held on June 14th and August 16th at Heritage Museum and the Lickin Festival.
Okay. Second by Ethan, any discussion? All in favor? Oops, sorry.
No, I'm so sorry, I just had a quick question. The vendor's license ordinance, I should remember if we pulled the beat south, I'm so sorry. Did, did that get amended so that if a business, an existing business wanted to allow a vendor on the property, they're supposed to get their conditional use permit changed? I don't remember that language being changed, I just wanted to throw that back there.
It's being held on another business's property, right? But which one, the outdoor heritage museum? Isn't that pollen or something?
Yeah. Yeah. Outdoor Heritage Museum doesn't have a CUP, does it?
Excuse me. The Heritage Museum had a food truck there last year and this was gone over code enforcement at that time, so they're all set.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All set, all in favor? All right, so moved. Airport runway crack repair and striping. We've got some quotes here, Joe, you want to hit us?
We received one, one bid, this is a project that Stan Tech helped us put out. It was a bidder's list, there were folks that were, that were interested in it and only one, one responded. We held the previous meeting at the airport, Dave was there from Stan Tech, and then Proceo was, was in attendance, so I saw what they're getting into. I'm working on the background paperwork with the FAA, which is always quite a, quite an ordeal. Airport Commission has approved the single bidder, approved the, the expenditure, which the expenditure is not $201,000 of Rancho money, that's AIP and or BIL funds, but federal funds. We'll be on the hook for about 5% of that, so I understand, so at, at the town level. We do have to pay the bills and then we get reimbursed. So I don't see any, any issue with the company, their amount came in under what the engineer had expected it to cost, so we're underneath that. Because it's a single bidder, it does require some extra steps with the FAA, again, I'm working on with them. I'm just looking for final approval from, from the board. Construction, if it's approved, construction would begin in late June or July to try to get it done. Whether it's the best, they take care of, they being the contractor takes care of runway closures, all that other stuff. Stan Tech will have a resident inspector on site. Project, crack sealing has to happen first and then striping. They're at least somewhere along the line that got out of sequence, so now it's the FAA is very clear about how that has to happen.
Makes sense.
There are two different types, two different levels of crack sealing, if the tunnel fills a crack and then there's seven types. Advance, we have to dig it out, put a patch back. I'm just looking for authorization to use those AIP, BIL funds, execute all of them necessary.
Make a motion to authorize town manager to use the AIP, BIL entitlement funds for $201,147.50.
Motion by Sam and a second by Keith, any discussion? All in favor? So moved. Got Airport Commission bylaws, commission sent back some recommendations, Joe.
They did, they met a week ago. I had some conversation about bylaws. One thing I want to point out right off the bat, if you look on the first page, third bullet point down, it says control and administration of airport buildings. That is a typo that should be struck. You were okay with being struck at the last meeting, just to transfer into this draft. That's just because there's so many traps floating around. I noticed that earlier in my review. One other thing that is not in that version, this, this is on.
Sorry, you didn't hear.
I, I, I have trouble.
You couldn't hear me.
I'm sorry.
Oh, so can I repeat it?
No, she was showing him which bullet.
I was showing him which bullet, he couldn't hear you.
Would you like me to repeat it? If you wouldn't mind, is it okay with the chair?
Yes, we're good.
So on, on third bullet point up or down, I should say, I've lost my baby.
The middle one.
At third bullet point down, where it says control and administration of airport buildings and facilities. In my original documents of the board, I struck that.
Okay.
And it didn't, this is nobody's fault really, there's so many versions of this floating around, you have to transfer into the next one. The other thing I want to point out right off the bat is the Airport Commission voted last week to keep language in there about the commission being advisory to the airport manager. They had a three oh vote on that, and I didn't have a chance to advance together and give that to the trice, so that's why that's not in there. But that spirit was unanimous, they were all three of the present to make sure that few folks in the day recognize it's advisory to the airport manager, so we should, or it's Smith, get it somewhere.
So we'll have another draft at our next meeting that we're going to.
Probably would be cleaner that way, so that, so we've got everything buttoned up, if you're okay with it.
We waited this long.
They did make some other substantive recommendations in red, those came directly from the Department of Commerce. Those are in there. There's a ball of correspondence, I think, from Mark.
Yeah. Did you, oh, Mark, yep.
Yeah, thank you. My vote of that, so I, I should have commented some feelings as well. And Joe and I are writing the same, we are, we're going to point out that, you know, they both have that, they are an advisory commission, so. I, but then Joe just had a stroke, I didn't, my verdict didn't have a stroke, but advising and control are kind of in conflict with each other. And so that's good, I'm glad you have my copy and.
Thank you, Sam.
With that being struck on that third dot down or up, what, how does that, how does that finish? I mean, do we say oversee or maintain? Or does it just say administration of airport buildings and related property?
This is true, I don't think that used to be in there at all because that falls under the responsibility of the airport manager, that person.
The whole thing is not just control.
The commission in turn would advise the airport management on how they might approach that, but they shouldn't have actual control over it.
All right, so we'll just get, oh, sorry, Mark, yep.
So really this whole section, they, they're going to provide advice to the airport manager or the town manager. You know, they're not actually going to be the ones that modernize the facilities and all of that stuff, they're going to advise.
Just, yep, 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 just what they've been doing, yep. All right, so we'll just wait for the amended copy at our next meeting to read that as a second reading.
You don't want to go over any of it as of now or?
If you have any. You have some comments on, yeah, what, what they sent back for?
Yeah, number two, with their additions to the alternate members.
Yep.
Is this, I'm not sure that this piece is needed. With making sure one consists of resident, one non resident, I don't mean.
Oh, as far as the alternates themselves?
Right. To specify, one must be this, one must be that.
We're going to bump up, would have to maintain the, the status and the structure of the committee anyhow, so you're probably right, it doesn't need to necessarily specify, we have one of each.
Yeah.
I don't know, anybody have any comments on that?
What do you think, Joe?
I think they were concerned about, I heard this a couple of times in meetings, that they were okay with the makeup of the commission being all residents, but they had concerns about there being, ever being a majority or close to majority of non residents, something to that effect. That's kind of where they were coming from with the, the one resident of each being an alternate, I believe is where it's coming. They're okay if it were two, two resident alternates, but they didn't want to have two non residents, is what I remember.
Right, well, because you'd have to maintain the structure, because we set it up as three, two last time, right? So even if you had one of each, or if you had two non residents, you couldn't put that in a resident spot.
Right, exactly.
And that's where that confuses.
Yeah, so.
Because you could only get bumped up into a spot you qualified.
Right.
So it may already be covered.
I think so.
Well, it's also another language to specify, it's 540, so you'd have to have both sets of language, if that's the case.
Right, and they should, they both should be in there, I believe. Right, it could pose at least three residents and up to two non residents. It's on the next page, three right up top, yeah. You're, you're.
On that same section. No, the, the next one down, qualifications for members.
Yep.
I tried to make an example. I tried to make an example why the original one, you know, was just whoever was interested could apply, you know, we've always had one or two pilots on there and stuff, had a pretty good cross-section and, you know, where you are, who two are on the park commission, I thought, you know, you really wouldn't want just all pickleball players on the park commission, you know, we really shouldn't just have all airport people on the airport commission, because it's a town facility, you know, and you get better discussions and more, if you have a little diversity on there, I thought, so. I didn't think the it should be restricted, I don't, I don't think the person should be restricted of not being able to apply for the airport commission.
I don't think it is, because it says.
It, it, it isn't, but it.
Right.
But it's a preference there, so if there's two people there in one way, it looks like, you know, they, they would tend to favor the, the way this is written, favor the airport person when they're already could be four on there, and the thing that's different about the airport commission than other ones is they have a full-time consultant, you know, that provides all the, really, all the expertise, you know, as far as airport stuff goes, but it's nice to have local pilots and on there too, that have their hands on break ground and stuff, so. That's why I have that on there and I thought, you know. It didn't.
Sam? I guess within, to continue on with that, do we need an A qualification for members? Does that even need to exist in the bylaws? I mean.
No other commissions.
Right?
No, I, I, I'm sorry. I agree with Sam and I was thinking that before Mark brought it up. Did a, a well-balanced board, no matter what the board is, or what it, for committee or commission. I think it's a good thing, although it doesn't restrict, it may discourage people from applying, thinking that, that they they don't qualify. Yeah, no, the more we discuss it, I almost think it doesn't need to be there at all.
And I think that you can, that last sentence of the, the composed can, can fill in with the membership, you know, I mean, just X, N, A, the bullet point, A, and just finish it up with.
Membership is the qualification.
Yeah.
Anything else to drink?
And then, and then B, being stricken.
Okay. Keith, what's your feeling? You like that?
I mean, I, I like it, but I'm a little, I don't think there's necessarily a need for strictly that language of qualification. But I think, given that environment, yes, it's, you don't want somebody strictly an air, air-qualified individuals, but I think if you get Joe glove street like me, that has no experience in aviation whatsoever, and I go up there, it's kind of a border, a secret, where you know I'm interested, there may not be a, a point where you don't have a full board, maybe there is. And what do you, like, what do I bring to the table? Do I have lack of experience? Now I'm a voting member that really has no
Right.
Vision of what that would be though, like, I'm going to learn the whole time and expect to understand what the engineer tells me, and hopefully I can vote on something legitimately, but I have no education, no background to support anything that he's discussing, so it's all going to be like, maybe neutral to me or unbiased, but I, I feel like there has to be some, which is probably a good thing, and some you're putting direction in something that, with people that may not be.
I think you're selling yourself short, and I think that.
Yeah, me, well, I mean, I think there's room for like people that have construction background or whatever, business-wise, but I just, I think that's important also. I know it's a preference, but I think it's important.
Don't forget that, um, that we're the ones that appoint these members, so on the, on the appointment letter, it says what experience do you have, and we go through all this. And this board, whoever sits on it, are the ones that decide whether we're putting forth a qualified applicant. If there are five for one spot, we're going to weigh all of us, what, who we think is going to be best.
Right. Feeling, everybody, wanting to take those three, those three lines out at the bottom of page two then, and just leave on what the board is composed of, and roll that into the
Membership?
The membership.
That's what I'd like to do.
That's what I'd like to do. I make a motion to strik- or I don't need a motion, or this isn't.
Well, you just, yeah, just throw it out there.
I make a motion to strike the, the new additions of the alternate members shall consist and remove the qualification for members part two where yeah, just remove the whole qualifications for members, and then move the composed of three residents and two non-residents taxpayers of the town of Rangely up to the membership section one. Paragraph, first paragraph.
I'll second that.
A motion by Sam, second by Keith, any other discussion? All in favor? All right. On reinstatement of expiring seats, have you said a question there? Within ninety days, you gotta let the board know. But, so if the person, because we talked about this last time, and I'm not sure if it's clear in here, if the person wants to stay on, they still are coming, it's coming back to us to get reappointed, correct? Okay, all right, yep.
And it isn't a given. I'm, I'm just confused by this, does this exist? I think Mark maybe mentioned it, but does this exist for other boards and committees?
Go ahead, Mark.
I, that's what was spoken, but when I read that, I don't get that impression of the reason to be imperative that these people reappoint themselves.
That's what I almost thought, right?
And it becomes a closed thing, which I think you're better off in, and that's in my comments, to strike this section and just let it follow the process that all of the boards and commissions do. Anybody that's interested comes and fills out a thing, the select board review, they make the appointment, when that three-year term is up, the people fill out another form, they do that, you know, who's ever on the table there, the select one again, appoint, appoint one that, that they can recommend an alternate for a vacancy, you know, I don't see any issue with that, but as far as reappointing themselves without going through the select, and I, that's just not.
No, that's the cleanest, yeah, that's what I thought, like, part commission, you get reelected, you know, so same type of thing, it would just come down for a reappointment.
All right.
Make a motion to strike reinstatement of expiring seats.
Second.
Motion by Sam and a second by Keith, any other discussion? All in favor? So moved. Anybody having anything else? You got anything, Joe? Also? All right, so, all right, we'll wait for the next meeting and bring that back. Good morning. This is supposed to be here at five thirty. Arbo's going to chime in. I'm, the phone was dark. Trying to make fast because you're here.
Makes sense, I was playing basketball, I was like, I got time to go to basketball.
I just got your text back.
Back, he's like, yeah.
Yep, missed the time.
We think that Steph's here bad? No, it's.
It may be, I.
She was here earlier, though.
Thought she was.
Yeah, she was there at five and it wasn't.
It wasn't this person.
Uh-uh.
That's Steph. Yeah. On a feel-up, on a feel, yeah.
All right. As far as I know, they're representing this coming person.
Okay, well, okay, we'll keep, we'll keep chugging along here then. Scenic byway layout, you've got us some drafts of the two projects. With signage, proposed signage that they're going to be doing?
Some signage concepts that our engineer sent along, your thoughts on this? Try to give us a little, little guidance on what you're thinking. They're close to having the initial plans ready. I think as a point of, point of clarification, I just wanted to have our input on this, and I figured I'd send it to you, see what your thoughts were. One of the things I brought here, so Depot Street, I have mentioned this publicly yet, but the scope of this has kind of come down a little bit. We used to have, if you look up there, some drawing that shows something in the back of the top sheet there, shows some, some paving on the back part of that property, that is no longer there, it's, it's, in the design, it's just the front block we're focusing on, a couple of reasons, number one is budget, schedule, and number two is there was a previous use of that property in the back that would require extensive testing and so forth. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, I'm just saying it would require testing, it would, would affect our schedule. So I just wanted to point that out, like, that plan in front of you, Quosic looks, looks pretty similar, but each of them have little bullets or balloons showing what signage might look like. It's pretty in keeping with what you see on byways that we are in our town already. Little covered kiosk here at Depot Street. And somewhere in here, we're going to actually reuse one that was at, I believe it's a noise overlook, we're going to try and recycle that, that one had a chainsaw incident a few years ago, we're going to, we're going to revive that, I believe in the we're going to put that back. So, just really generally looking to see that the flavor of these signs is okay with you, you're all right with what they look like. Agree that they fit the.
What color flavor? What, what, I mean, what's being on them, or like the way they aesthetically look?
Yeah, the way they look.
Gotcha.
I like it, I mean, one thing we've been trying to do at the park for years, and the town has been trying to do is keep the same look, no matter where you go, this over, this overlook or downtown or wherever. So I think this helps tie everything together as well.
One, one question, I know you can't represent necessarily fully on this plan, but if you look at that bottom picture of the Ranger Lake sign and the orientation of the map and everything, understanding radiation on this print. And just thinking about, Depot is fairly open when you pull up the sidewalk right now, but you obviously, right now, you have the telephone pole, whether it's signage that's there, that kind of somewhat obstructs your view, watching pedestrians pushing to pull out into traffic. Regular modeling sign is kind of same example as you, but if you bring the sign in, I wonder if you further obstruct that ability to forecast traffic coming in and out.
That came, yeah, that came up in some of our early meetings, that same, same concern, and the architects and the engineers are considering that with their placement here. They've got that in mind. And, and it does, I mean, this does show all this kind of activity happening out towards the front, but that's really kind of the point of catching people's attention with it, if you want to be safe, obviously.
Right.
You know, having all that happen at the front is by design, so that folks catches their attention, they know okay, this is part of the scenic byway. This is where we can stop and get more information, and then pick up the Lakeville Library Loop Trail, once you're on that, you're seeing all of downtown, right, you're getting a great, great trip there, and kind of the similar, similar thing in Quosic. That's the, that's where the angle, I think the Anglin Heritage is the sign that was at Noise Overlook, I believe that's the one that's going to be there.
That's just another to piggyback off that same people treat the same, same location, so obviously right now, with any kind of major event or traffic control, we have our large signage for the programmable signs, so now when you start to look at development of this property, can we now, can we then still put that sign in place to utilize those message boards?
That's a good question. I think it would still fit in the far back corner towards, towards the cafe.
Just thinking about how you, how you, as you develop it, how you then enter that, put that sign up on there, ride the sidewalk necessarily, or climb in the curb, or come around some kind of hardscape, or.
I think it would be a different experience, certainly, we may have to think internally about relocate further up the road, further up the hill somewhere. As opposed to be a, maybe just go to where we get that.
Same.
Good point to think about.
And three signs in that small little air, in that area, is that we need three signs?
Actually, it's going to be projected four right now, but these, these two small ones are those little counter height.
Oh, yeah, like.
The two big ones are going to be this key, the, the one with the
Message board type.
Covering, and then, and then the one that we have at the overlook. And then there's two little ones. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Just trying to, yeah, figure out like not all these big billboards.
Is that too, too busy for you, or do you want to see if we can cut some of that out?
I think if I, personally for me, if I could see a more graphical overview, like overhead, it'd be easier to absorb, I think, based on this, this sketch.
Yeah.
If there's way for, this means, is it way rate generating that kind of conceptual now?
He's, he's involved in it, it's, it's actually, the name is Kelly, Kelly and Jamie are working on it from Wright Pierce, but Larry actually has been closely involved, Kelly has been out for eternity, we, so yeah, he's involved in it. I can reach out and see if, see if they can give us a little bit different view on that.
If you give us a street, yeah, a street, street shot anyhow, kind of idea what we're looking at.
Because I know that sign on the bottom left is, you think about the one that's up at the the overlook on the hill, that's, that's a six foot by sign, that's pretty that's pretty, pretty large.
Sorry, Effna, yep?
No, that's okay, I just, are you losing parking spaces with that much signage?
No, it's, it's happening in an area where it wouldn't be parking, it's kind of that green space that's up there.
It's the lawned area up front now, so, yeah.
I know, that's why I'm a fan.
Right. All right, so you're gonna reach out to them for some head-on shots from the street or something to?
I will, I'll reach out and ask for some street views. I, while we're on this topic, I have a little bit more to share with you. Later in the week, I have a meeting set up with Jamie from Wright Pierce and Mike, Mike Verge, actually, from A D O T, he's the acting project manager, we're going to talk about schedule, budget. In the email that I saw from Mike, just want to kind of phrase everybody. He's obviously wanting to keep it on budget, wants to get the federal funds that are associated with this committed as, as soon as we can. There was mention in there about, you know, the second hearing, whether that was, you know, a requirement or not, we've, I think we've already satisfied the D O T's requirement for public input. And I think the D O T's concern really is that when we have our consultant do it, we obviously have to pay a consultant for their part in the public hearing. So I'll fill you in on that, you, you may want to have a place holder for the nineteenth, and just have a public hearing and go over these things internally, whether or not we bring a consultant in or not. That is the update on that, I'll be meeting with them later, make sure this thing's on, on schedule, on budget, more importantly, get the federal funds committed, all of you.
Let's, uh, let's set one for five on the nineteenth, that way we got it. If we end up having a five-minute meeting or an hour or whatever, if not.
I figure we're probably bored with it. If I have the sign stuff by the next year.
So, May nineteenth.
Question?
Yes, sir?
This, this example, you know. It says, larger seeming byway sign example. That frame, to me, isn't as effective as the other ones that have been presented, you know, it almost looks a little on is that actually going somewhere? Is it? Like you said, they all look similar, like the Anglin one, real nice, the rustic, how the timber one looks good, this one kind of looks a little on the cheese this guy.
I would, I'm in favor of the timber frame as well, you could still do the artistic design on top. If not, at least that timber frame would be a continuity throughout the town.
This, this style is.
Yeah. I think that fits better than the area, yeah. What's that? Right.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That is, that is it.
I think that's good.
Well, we'll hold off on that call plan.
Yeah, Don will be coming in probably ten after six, so for the call plan, we'll hold off on that.
Yeah.
People with a morgue, you know, they're looking at you.
Yeah, let's do it.
You have a question on that? Good, convenient packet. Not, it's, it's not any kind of correction, just carry on.
Okay, there's a copy in your packet of letters from last week, some of them pulled short. Everybody's been mailed, everybody has the potential to have a morgue in front of their property, it's been mailed one of these. Basically talks about the new relatively new morgue, and it's been in effect a little while, it's taken us some time internally to ramp up for getting out, getting the, the news out to folks of how we, how we enforce it. So there's just a nice letter here about each waterfront owner will be eligible for one morgue for every feet of old shoreline. How you apply for a permit, this is a process that we're going to have a launch pool for I Works internally. How you apply for a permit. This is a process that we're going to have a launch pool for I Works internally. I Works is the code enforcement software. I Works has a license feature that we'll use for that right now. We're still working on building that portion of it. Permits are good for three years, renewable at the end of the permit for another three years. Initial cost is 150 plus processing for total of 210. Folks can buy mooring balls locally, a few places, Boss, Boston Marines, some other folks, Lakeside Manhattan. Maybe say in the letter here, and then of course take a vibe anywhere that they want to buy them as long as they're compliant. Meet the, meet the requirements of the town. Moring law, state law says what it would look like, the colors, the size. We're going to. Make sure that people put their lot number on it so that we can identify where that mooring belongs and we're researching what comes loose. This letter has gone out. It's part of the unrolling of the enforcement of the mooring permits.
You have something Keith?
Yes, sir. So just, this is, you guys' concern and interest and you could be, I think I like education, but I'm. The last paragraph, it says that it is the duty of the court enforcement office to remove neglected, abandoned or unauthorized moorings, including what limited to on page eight strong locations. And just understanding, some moorings are relatively, not, I would say not complex, but hefty. You know, the chains or pinch points, you don't want to have a water graph. So I'm just curious of how the enforcement force of that would be. Removal or how that process would work in the future.
That's, that's a good question. I think operationally, it may not necessarily physically be a code enforcement office removing it. They may cause it to be. Most likely with higher third parties, so.
So that goes back to the owners expense.
The owner would pay for it.
Thank you.
Ultimately, the town would have to pay for it.
When you say owner, I want to know if you mean the lot owner or the boat owner?
It's the person that owns the mooring, which would be the person to qualify, get to be a waterfront owner, be eligible for a mooring every 15 years.
About that somewhere else.
All right. So thanks for that, Joe.
I believe, I believe we have a guest here from Franklin Mooring.
That's correct. You have the floor, sir. All right.
Have, let me pass these out if you, it's all right? If you all have one as well, if you'd like. There. How's everyone doing tonight?
Very well, self.
Well. Except for I don't pass out papers well, I'll tell you. There you go, you met.
All right. So not sure how much you have heard. Where would you like me to stand next?
Anywhere you feel comfortable.
Yeah. So not sure how much you have heard, but you know, Franklin, we are expanding our emergency room. Hopefully you've not had to experience that, but we are expanding that. We're going from 17 beds to 23 with two fully ligature free behavioral health rooms. And then two flex rooms that we can make behavioral health if we need to. So it'll have a door inside that we can pull a door, a garage door down. And all of the head walls and oxygen and everything else will then go behind that. So now we'll have a total of four behavioral health rooms as we're moving into this space. As we need to, treatment rooms will have fast track rooms. So we're going to go into four fast track. So those lower acuity things, we come in. The tick bites, the rash, the stub toes, the stomach ache, those things, right? So we're going to be able to hopefully move patients through faster as we move into this process. The, what we currently see is we're, we're having a lot of spikes, right? In patient and flow and. The volume of patients that we actually are seeing, we've seen a 40% increase. In our emergency room demand over the last few years. So it's just continually going up and up. So you'll see here with on the, within these papers. The, the difference in what we're doing, we're having to do all of this while maintaining our emergency room open. Right? So the logistics of this is pretty, you know. It's a bit tough. So we've got a, we've got a few rooms closed. We opened up another section in the hospital for the lower acuity things that we can move into. The, the space, as you know it today. Patients that come from, say, of the car and the EMS go through the same door. That's going to change. EMS will have that same door, but patients are going to come through the front of the hospital and take it immediately, right? So then where the current annex is a lower acuity space right now, that's going to become the waiting room. So a larger waiting room dedicated to the emergency room, EMS comes to their own space. Will have a triage room to be able to be, patients can be triaged. Either put right back out into the waiting room until a, another room opens up or moved from there straight back to the room they need to go to. Very nice. What other questions do you have for me?
I, I saw a couple of questions. Sure. I'd love to, the initiative to, to move forward with, with floor space, understanding where we are. Does this accommodate, like, will this accommodate current staffing or, or would it cure more staffing to fulfill?
So we've actually approved some more ER physician staffing. And we're in the process of approving nursing staff, more ancillary staff to be able to support more volume and more patients.
My other question would just be, sorry, just the, you mentioned the 40% increase over the last few years. Do you contribute that to increase the population or to more towards like people that just are seeking? I guess that, that, the state of person that would necessarily seek normally seek medical attention and are now looking for it, or is there people that are actually seeking maybe. Aphobias or something like that?
Sure. Well, so I'm going to say all of the above. We're getting older, right? So the area is getting older, the population's older. So we do have some of that. We do have those that, you know, COVID kind of changed the landscape of healthcare and who seeks, comes to the hospital. So we are seeing some of those patients who are seekers. I mean, that's, every hospital is going to get us to get seekers, right? And then the access for those patients who don't have. Primary care. Right? There, the emergency room becomes their primary care. And that's how that, that's another, another big spike in, in our volume.
Yes, sir. You said you're adding behavioral health rooms or expanding the department.
Correct.
Does that also mean you're going to have more, and I mean quantity, more, more qualified. Psychiatric personnel? Are you going to have additional, I guess?
So we're, we're, we do not foresee the need to add extra psychiatric personnel. We still have our psychiatrist that when, if a patient comes into the emergency room. The ER physician then consults with our onsite, I say onsite, they're, they're in the, the medical arts building right there. Or consult crisis. So we have several psychiatric workers, physician, APPs and nursing staff. That can be consulted at any point.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you very much.
All right.
Have a great day.
You as well, thanks.
You got a letter here, a letter for the Trail Center, you submitted for them?
Correct. Yeah, I just wanted you to be aware that I had written that on behalf of the town. Trail Center is applying for a Northern Borders Regional Commission Catalyst Rant to expand their other recreation. Then this opportunity to map, saddleback, he brought that to my attention. I've submitted that letter. I just wanted you to be aware that I sent that. I do think.
Motion enter in executive session?
Make motion to enter into executive session, MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 4056E, consultation is illegal.
Motion from Sam, second by Keith, all in favor? So move. Excuse us folks while we enter into executive session. All right, quarter seven. Welcome back to our meeting, coming out of executive session with no action to be taken. Wait a second, see if we have any attendance. Anybody staying in the hallway? All right then. Donna zooming in then or?
Oh, yes. Donna, she's, she's in the way.
All right. Thank you for waiting, Donna. Hello, Donna. Can you hear us, Donna?
Yes, I can.
Oh, thank you for your patience.
Sure, sure. I've been getting work done.
Always something to do. That's right.
Always something to do. Yep.
So we got a couple, a couple few chapters here.
Let me get.
Anything you'd like to start off with? Just sum up anything with us or?
Um, you know, some of these you've seen, some of these, most of these you've seen already. And the committee has seen them more than once also. So. I think at this point, I, I'm just curious what your comments are.
Personally myself, I went through, I thought everything looked great. You guys, I think you're doing a heck of a job. I didn't see anything that jumped out at me. I don't know if anybody else has any comments.
Sure. The biggest thing for me was I saw just some run on stuff that just seemed like punctuation maybe needed to be added. I'm saying the argument of language or, or.
Do you want to point out yours?
I gotta find it out. I didn't mark it up again.
Oh, yes. On the, on the climate with the graphs, is it confusing to, I guess, oh, sorry, climate chapter, page two. Is it confusing to have the snow being blue in the first three and then you go from April to being blue for rain? And then coming back here, I'm not familiar with really graphs and it might not be confusing, but the staying consistent.
Oh.
With being.
Yeah, rain is orange in the other one. Yeah, good, good catch, good catch.
Just, just something silly like that. I didn't know if it mattered. Obviously, it's, it's only saying rain melted snow, but.
Or you could follow the standard meteorological data, which would be green for any type of precipitation. And a snow would be a blue in this case, just to follow that, what people come up with on the news.
Okay.
Oh.
Just something green?
Yeah, so standard meteorological information, right, just about rain is green typically.
Okay, I, I went with the colors that Excel gave me, so, um. And.
Not that it really matters probably at the end of the day, but.
And, and so I can, yes, I can definitely make those changes. So all the rain will be green.
And then back to that first chapter and background. There's pests to people such as ticks and to trees such as spruce budworm create different problems. I don't, I don't quite understand how that fits in the rest of this weather. And it's not listed anywhere else in the, in the chapter. It's just kind of metaphorical. I don't know.
So paragraph one background, for me to understand this, it doesn't, I don't think it fits where it is, but for me to understand it. As an outdoorsman, the lack of any kind of harsh winter conditions are allowing those bugs to flourish and nest more rapidly. Or, or the nests to be, to be more prevalent. So you're not having the snow that then.
To kill them.
To kill them off.
Yeah, so maybe a more explanation.
Yes.
Explanation of that. Yeah. Does that make sense, Donna?
So, um, where we're talking about the ticks and the things like the spruce budworm. Um, which that's coming from the Maine Forest Service. Um, you want a little more explanation on that?
Yeah, I think, I think a transition into that would be, you know, a transition that allows that to make sense within that. And then obviously like you have explanation of how that's created.
I just couldn't understand where, where that was going from. But when you say that, that with the weather, it's creating, you know, we're not being able to kill off ticks. And the, and the spruce trees, or the spruce bud.
So something like changes in, changes in the weather and, you know, what these graphs show is that the changes are slight. I mean, there's, there's changes. And you can't really say it's a trend because it's only since 2010 that I, I use the data. So. You know, but, um. Okay, so something like if it said changes in weather, even slight changes. Can change insects and, you know, get different, different varieties of insects such as ticks. It, it, is that kind of what you're looking for?
Uh, yeah, I think you could go as simple as saying that. It, you know, given the data you have, not obviously operating this, but given the data you have collected. Snow, I'm going to say snow in this case, that's most prevalent in the idea of a tick born. Process is the lack of snowfall or, or. Accumulation of snow has allowed these. Pests, for lack of words, I might want to say right now, to flourish or, or become more prevalent throughout the outgoers or something.
Or you can continue with, with the winters lower than usual snowfall have disrupted recreational activities, comma, as well affected the. You know, as well as ticks to trees. So that, because that last sentence kind of just cuts off too. So maybe a continuation, just reverse it.
Yeah, reverse it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a good, that's a good solution.
Jeez.
His in-person things really, he's got so much to say. He's got all these papers he hasn't signed.
I know.
He's going to be cramped up tonight.
Anything else?
Just, I'm trying to look at the housing, the first page of housing. So they, that first, I worked in italic, apartment buildings were voted as the most needed type of housing at public meeting in January 2024. In Rangeley. In 2022, 50% of households own their home. I don't, I feel like maybe changing this sentence, I was kind of writing in 20, in 2022, Rangeley. 50% of households own their homes statewide, the ownership is 50. Because is that rest of that state statewide, is that 2022 as well or is that future now? Or is that?
No, that would also be, yeah, right.
2022?
At the same time statewide.
At the same time statewide. Right? I don't know. Just trying to figure out how to rewrite that into being more of a blended sentence in 2022. In 2022, 50% of households own their home in Rangeley statewide, the homeownership was. Because I think is, is the confusing part was 75% and nationally the rate was 65 in 2022. Because I read that as, is it, is it now or then statewide? Are we still in the 2022?
Yeah.
This is.
Okay, yep.
Everything is great. I'm not going to get into it with you guys. You're driving nuts. Oh, yes, one more. There is one thing that I cannot stand. On, I think I mentioned this before, on the economy, page five. It's you give an example of Morton Furbish rental units for owners when they are not using the unit while the number of units fluctuates. I don't see how this is necessary in bringing in a business into our comp plan. How we haven't mentioned any other businesses isn't appropriate.
You're on, you said page five?
Sorry, page six, I must be at the wrong again. Sorry, page six of economy, page six. It's at the top of the page. You talk about land use. I think we're talking about STR data. And then it goes into Morton Furbish also manages, I don't think, because there's other companies that manage rentals and that they might find that offensive.
So if I say. If I just instead of said Morton and Furbis just said local management companies. Local property managers.
I think then you're then you're being general, you have the wrong data for it generalized.
Yeah, because it's not them. I don't think we, I mean, you you say that there's three hundred and eighty-three short-term rentals in this lodging, which that's this nice.
You could fix it easy enough by just saying one local rental company.
For an example.
One reported this.
One local, okay, there you go. I'm okay with that then.
I don't have a choice.
I just felt I just didn't want other business, other people.
Yeah, no, that's that's a good, that's a good catch.
Offended.
Okay.
I think that's it. I swear. I'm good. I'm really good. This is excellent.
You're good, Jake?
Happy.
Good job, Jake. Good work on this.
I'm almost as happy as Jake.
I'm not the most badly sound person, so I.
Maybe on the. On the future land use plan, maybe the map of all the areas. I don't know if that was a talk of like with the residential, the village, the downtown, so people can see.
Oh. Um, that map is in the town office. Do you, do you have it, Joe?
On the wall in this room, yeah.
Oh, okay. So if you look at that wall, there's it's it's existing zoning and then you'll see there's a certain color hash mark on there. And that's, oh, is Joe going to point this out for me? So there's there's hash marks that show how that's proposed to be changed. So what the committee did. Was we looked at where the public water and the public sewer is. So there's a rather significant piece of land in the village that. That is being opened up for more dense development and that's based on. The presence of sewer and in a lot of cases also water. So we just heard over and over again from everyone about the need for more housing that. If we didn't, if we didn't increase the areas where housing could occur. You know, changing the zoning wasn't going to make that much of a difference, so. So I'm glad you're looking at this. So you can see there's the big piece. Going along Moon Lake Road and that and that part of the village. There's also another piece along. Cottage Road, there was some residential area there that's proposed to be village, so a little bit higher density. And then there's a new commercial area in midtown. It's it's kind of small. But you'll see. It's where the dive tanks are.
From Inglewood.
Yes, yes. And that's a small piece, but. But when when you look at all the natural resources and and other maps that, you know, things that you're not seeing on that particular map. It makes a lot more sense. There is no public water and sewer on that one.
Right, right.
We talked about some other areas. We talked about. Allowing some increased densities in aquatic, but because there aren't provisions for public sewer there. We didn't go there. So I would. I mean, I I would characterize this, those new spaces as as a bold move. For housing. It it it's. It's bold. And. And we wouldn't have gone so bold had we not heard it everywhere we went.
Housing was a common theme.
Yeah. Business owners, residents. It 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 was, it was the, it was the universal topic was housing.
I don't think Rangeley itself can ever facilitate the need of the change, the change that's needed. And what we need for housing, I think it's going to take the plantations for sure to have those developments, whether it's trailer parks, water, or, you know, more practical, smaller units. Real estate value along is obviously staggering in some places really, but we'll never, we'll never allow the type of. Needed facilities here.
More workforce housing type stuff, right?
I I see the need for that.
No, I agree with that. I would say that Dallas has the most. Whoever owns it has the most access to public water on undeveloped land at a. Any of the plantations, not public sewer, but public water.
At least in that case, if you went Dallas, you could, most of that stuff you could use relatively easily with gravity. If you go up Upper Dallas, Lower Dallas, it only take would take less. Yeah, pump stations get a lot easier on a fairly. Minor incline versus, you know, cranes or aquatic you have.
What are you talking about sewer?
If you had expanded. I don't think we would enough. It would take, you'd have to go off this, capitalize off this system. But you have to have networking or or inner inner community relations at that point, but would allow you growth down the road to have. To absorb less cost in building, you know, subject system versus public night and day difference.
Might come to a point where plantations do their own subject system too. I mean, their own sewage.
I mean, even if even if just a pretreatment to push to here, it'll, it's something. Anyway, getting off topic.
All right, well, you got anything else? Sorry, go ahead.
Um, you know, what it what it does is we're trying to remove any barriers that might be in zoning. To to adding more housing and creating some opportunity. So that's as far as, you know, that that's as far as this can go. Whether or not anything actually happens. That's to be seen, but but what, but it's being set up so that. So so that housing can happen. And and because what I really like about it in the village is you have lots that are large enough. To be able to create maybe a few units here and there. But they're not so large that they're going to be huge developments. Which gives, which gives the homeowner the opportunity in a lot of cases, if people don't have a big 401K or what they have is their land. And it gives them an opportunity to maybe do something with their land that allows them to stay in their house. And creates more housing opportunities. So it's a, it's a smaller scale rather than opening up a rural area where you tend to have larger lots, where you would have. Large new developments. This is much smaller. In terms of the type of development that I think you'll see. I think you'll see it be small and incremental.
Thank you very much, Donna.
You're welcome.
Donna, can you hang out through the? Calendar items are coming up here in a second.
Yeah, sure.
Go right ahead, Joe. Let's jump down there.
So calendar, June tenth is the annual town meeting, but June eighteenth, the comprehensive plan review committee is meeting. For the public hearing for this comp plan at the school. I would recommend that the board attend that and also call that as a public hearing for yourselves too, so that you can be part of that. Comp plan is committee is meeting. This week and two days from today, they're meeting in this room to kind of finalize the things that you have seen here. They've got some loose ends, but. The eighteenth is their target to have a public hearing.
So you you want us just, we're just going to open it up and hand it over to that?
Yeah, that's what I would do. That way you're involved in the process.
Okay. All right, yeah.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Oh, make a motion to call for a public hearing at the school, June eighteenth, six P M. The comprehensive plan.
Second motion by Sam, second by Ethan, all in favor? So moved. All right then.
And we'll take it from there. We'll know. The town meeting is already set. You did that at your last, you know, last meeting, special town meeting is seven, nine. And all these other steps are just incidental to that. Thanks, Donna. I just wanted you to be around for that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we will. We should have a finished product for you. Well, let me call it a first draft, a first draft in. Together. By the fifteenth of May. So coming right up.
Excellent. All right, good work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, good night.
We have any correspondence, Joe?
I don't have any correspondence.
Nothing to be written or recorded. We went down through the calendar.
I do have a couple of things that are talented. I do have the latest schedule for the aquatic boat ramp improvement project. This was issued May first. They're constructing retaining wall. I think that is close to complete based on what I've seen from pictures. This week, they're working on that. They've just realignment of the curving of the ramp a couple of weeks ago. Fine grating of the access drive is going to happen later in this week. They're going to excavate the gravel from the ramp down. Route four down to the ramp, I should say. They're going to fine grade and they're planning to pave as early as next week and then lower and see. And then clean up the schedule for the end of May, final walk through the first of June. So we're shooting for a substantial completion around the first of June. Keep you up to date on that. That dock obviously has not been installed at this point. The docks in Rangeley and Hayes Landing have been installed.
On that, on that boat ramp project also being down today. I anticipate hopefully it doesn't happen, but understand people that are going to back into that now with that defined wall. Into that ramp and the orientation of that ramp and the bulkhead now. I almost wonder if you have. I'm saying you have less swing, but I think you have less ability to spring that truck over that bank a little bit, your nose to swing. So I wonder how long it's going to take for. Somebody to smack that, which I hope it doesn't happen, but I wonder.
Wall's been moved back some, I believe.
I'm just curious how it, how it's going to flow with. It's always been a problematic boat launch anyway, but I'm just curious now, that defined wall, if it makes a difference now people. Interpret their swing.
I think we gained a little bit of distance. It may be a challenge for first folks using it who hadn't used it that way. Crack ceilings, they are hoping to start this week. This is for the municipal street crack ceiling. The new bottle shed is in the transfer station. If you haven't seen that yet, that's up there. All paperwork is done on that. I already mentioned the meeting I have later in the week with T and Byways. We, oh, I want you to know this, that we've hired a mechanic.
Yeah, I met him, yeah.
His name is Bill Winter. He's from the Augusta area and has a place.
Does that mean, does that mean we're? Fully staffed? No, I mean, fully fully staffed?
All the full-time positions.
All the, so everything that we have out there to hire.
All the full-time positions.
That's, how long's it been?
I think two or three times since I've worked for.
That's fantastic. Good job, Joe.
Thank you for your, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So he'll he'll settle in, get to know everybody and start taking care of our fleet. I do want to thank all the public works folks and others who helped spruce up the transfer station recently. Have a chance to see that, but there's a big improvement there. There's still some distance to cover in the long term. Doc, sorry to mention those. That's all I have.
End of wrap. All right. Anybody have any communication they want to share?
I'm just going to ask Joe one question. How did we, how are we doing with the? The utility pulse switches? I saw someone working on something today on Pleasant Street, so I was getting excited.
Yeah, so that is. We're either getting ready to do it or it's underway. Last thing I heard was they had a crew coming up. It's May now, it may.
Cool.
And then Tracy had mentioned at the end of last week that somebody reached out to her and find out it's okay to temporarily.
Awesome. Okay, that's all.
As far as I know, they're they're on track to get that out of here. Coincidentally, there's a project coming through. I don't know if I told you this yet. Trying to reach, the state is coming, Manute is coming through to do some ADA improvements. Yes, his air coordinator was in touch with me. He pulls her in the way, you know, anything. I actually do. And then with with mine. So as far as I know, they're they're going to start.
Good, good. Excellent.
The public works will probably be happy about that.
All right, I think that's a wrap. We'll undertake a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
For me, thanks, second by Sam, all in favor? You guys in two weeks. Thank you, everybody.
Maybe I'll be here, maybe I'll be on time.